Enter, however.
Well, I'm talking about the four parking spots that are, that are fifteen by twenty-four, which tells me they're reserved for a box truck, not a suburban.
Sure.
And if you remember, right next door, we, they were going to park a plow truck, but that did not, the plow truck was not included in the parking plan.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we didn't allow him to park the plow truck, even though it was out back and out of sight.
Yeah.
It exceeded his parking allowances.
Yep, yeah.
And if the reasoning behind the oversize of these stalls is to park oversized vehicles in them, not pickup trucks and suburbans, but trucks.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, we can, we can make sure that, we can look and see if there's a way that we can add a stipulation that just reduces, uh, commercial vehicle storage on-site.
I think that'd be.
Out, outside storage.
Outside storage.
In the shed doesn't matter, yeah.
Indoor.
It's fine, park it, you got a twelve-foot garage door, it's just, you know, we, we've only got one Highway twelve.
Correct.
And we're, and we're, and I don't want to be driving down Highway twelve looking at trucks with advertising on the side of it parked day after day after day.
Sure.
If you're, if you're, if you're paying to build a pole building to put stor, indoor storage in there, then they go in the indoor store.
Sure, sure, yeah. We can look at doing that, 'cause, uh, the parking spaces already, so they're required ten parking spaces and, and, uh, just outdoor surface parking spaces, they have eighteen with one, uh, ADA accessible parking space, so, um, the parking standards are met on this site.
Exceed.
Yeah, they do.
Some more.
Yep.
And then the only thing I'd say, and, and I don't know if this is right, but I see eight-by-eight garage trash.
Uh, container, yeah.
Well, I don't, I, 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 I don't know, are those nine-foot doors or eight-foot doors? I don't want to get into it.
Yeah.
But I mean, it, eight, 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 an eight-foot door is too narrow a door.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess just more procedural questions.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause like I said, I really support the residential component of it, and I would love to see this go through, so I don't want to deny it altogether. Is it possible to send it back for consideration, even just reducing the size of that accessory building?
Sure.
To be more similar to the rest of it or something?
Yeah, I mean, all that is, all that is.
It may be considered open to it.
Yeah, all that is possible, I, I can't, obviously, I can't speak on behalf of the applicant to guarantee that that's possible. Um, but yeah, certainly, I mean.
I mean, more from our viewpoint, I don't want to deny, deny it outright, 'cause to me, that sends the wrong message and would probably delay things more, but, 'cause I do really think it's a great use, but I think some tweaking could be done.
Sure, sure, no, I, you know, I, I think the city council excepted this, I think staff too was on, has been, uh, has been on the fence on some of this stuff, but, uh, no, so I understand, we can definitely take it back and, 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 and talk to the applicant and see if that's possible.
Since the applicant is here, maybe if they come forward?
Yeah.
I believe the applicant is here, did you want to speak to some of our questions?
My name is Steve Urban with Out of the Box Architecture, um, chairman and, uh, committee members, uh, very interesting discussion, we'll get right to it, you know, so it's a bit dilly-dallying here. Um, since I'm the guy that put in those big deals, never even thought about a box truck. Uh, growing up in Montana, we liked to get those doors and stuff, get in between the doors in these pickups, and it was really put in there for pickups because we felt that there could be, you know, with four apartments, there could be three, four guys in there, or three, four ladies in there that are, have horses, they got big pickups, and we just didn't want to put them in the typical, uh, you know, ten-by-twenty or like nine-by-twenty, so that was the reasoning behind it. Uh, to clarify, it de, definitely is a storage area, uh, the owner of the property, uh, is a person that deals with, um, the, uh, hot tub concepts, and that's all that storage is for, is to put that in there. There is no, not going to run an operation and so on, to make the taxes work, to make everything work, if he can get his storage area there for these, then that helps in the process, so that we can make this a, a reality. And that's the only, only reason, there is, uh, uh, by no means anything other than that would be in there, what it, what he owns. There is absolutely no, and we talked with staff on this, and it was very clear to us as we talked, that this cannot be used for any other type of, of rental or anything. So if a boat shows up, it's got to be his boat, you know, we understand that. And so, uh, I hope that clarifies a little bit of the doubt in there. Yes, we can make them a couple feet narrower if that's the case, but, uh, you know, you get dings on your cars and trucks and, uh, there, it was really strictly that, because we had the space, so I made sure that, that they could drive in and drive out and not, not be a problem, and it is for the pickups. As far as the, the box trucks, never even thought about that, um, but, that doesn't, but I was thinking as you were talking, that doesn't preclude that John Dole is electrician that's renting the place, and his boss has got him this little bigger truck that he uses for his business, and yet now we have a place for them to park. They're not parking in little, uh, little, uh, car parking area. And so that was the whole theory behind all of that, and, uh, and I'm, I'm sure we can work out the details so that you can, you know, that you're, you're safe, that all of a sudden we don't come in there with forty box trucks or something. So, uh, staff and us can work that out with no problem.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Do you have an idea of how frequently they would need to be accessing their indoor storage for the other businesses? Is it like a daily thing where?
Oh, no, I don't, no, not a daily, it could be a weekly, or it could be every two weeks, it could be something of that nature. No, they're not going to sell them out of there by no means. But when you, if, as anybody's been in business, if you can buy a big lot, you're going to do a better job than if you're buying them three at a time. So that's the only, that's the only reason, uh, for that. Um, five, to, to, just to put it bluntly, five units is a pretty hard nut to crack here. And so, the owner had to look at, hey, if I can put some storage here, I don't have to pay for storage over here, therefore, that helps me keep these rents in, in line to make this happen. And, uh, one of the things that I'd like to share with you is when he first bought this or was going to buy it, um, and I came along and, uh, we looked at it, 'cause I don't know, have you, any of you been in there? Okay, we started looking around and says, you know, this might not be a bad place to live, you know, it's, uh, with the hardwood floors and the high ceilings and sort of a cool place, and if, if you notice on the, on the plans, we've left all the, the apartment each parts, other than the, the, uh, than the bedrooms, you know, quite open. So this will be, uh, with wood floors and open and high ceilings and windows all around, uh, we, uh, came up with it so that we put a unit on each side. A lot of people would have tried to put four units on that same floor, we didn't, we put just two. And, uh, so that's how it all started, was, was when we were in that building.
Thank you. Any other questions?
For us?
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you have any more, I'm standing over here if something else comes up.
Okay. Other discussion?
Well, I think to, um, John's point, just to say, I think if we could put a condition in there about the residential piece being done first before the accessory building, I'd feel more comfortable about that.
Sure.
So it's not suddenly just a storage building with an empty.
I, I don't know if they, one has to be done before the other, but the, but the, uh, certificate of occupancy does not get.
Yeah.
It does not get given, they, they, they do not get to use the accessory building prior to the other one.
Sure.
Otherwise, that's the first thing that's getting built.
That's what I, that's what I said, too.
We concur.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that'll be the last building up.
Thank you. Other discussion, question? Do we need to rewrite this resolution with the changes we noted tonight?
Um, yeah, I would just put with, uh, with the changes council noted and.
Because we don't meet for another month, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's, I think that's fair.
Would you list those changes so we're on the same page? As to what we're approving?
Him list them, so I don't.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, no outdoor commercial vehicle storage on-site, and the residential component would be completed before the exen, accessory building component, right?
No, and then, I, the, the, I, I think, I think the planning commission, and I think, uh, planner.
Yeah.
Did an excellent job of, of putting this together, it's, it's very, very detailed and.
Yep.
And, uh, and, uh, I would, again, just reiterate that, that the conditions are in there because they're a condition of, of this event, and so we just need to make sure that landscaping and lighting and, and, uh, parking lot, the tumonists and all these things are met.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yep.
So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution nineteen dash zero-three-two-five dash zero-two, conditional use permit and site plan review to allow multifamily dwelling at fifty-three hundred Highway twelve with the changes as noted by our attorney.
I'll make that.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill, any further discussion? All in favor, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you for being here. Next item of business is Lake Minnetonka SWAT Joint Power Agreement, and I will turn that over to the chief.
Honorable mayor and, uh, council members, uh, before you is the Lake Minnetonka SWAT Team Joint Powers Agreement. Just to give you a little bit of history and the viewing audience and people here, so West Hennepin Public Safety Department by no means could have their own SWAT team, uh, with just the cities of Maple Plain and Independence, nor could Orno or Wayzata or Minatrista or Excelsior. So in two thousand and three to two thousand and six, the Mound Police Department, which no longer exists but is part of a contract with Orno Police, uh, due to some significant events where the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, uh, emergency response unit wouldn't come and help, uh, we, they formed their own, uh, emergency response unit with South Lake Police. Uh, in that process, kind of a trial run, see how it, how it worked out, it was very successful and very beneficial to those two agencies. In two thousand and, uh, six, other agencies began to join, um, the Orno and, uh, South Lake and Mound, now Orno joined, and then two thousand and eight, West Hennepin joined the, uh, the SWAT team, and then so did Minatrista Police. In two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen, I was actually a member of the SWAT team and, uh, so, saw firsthand, uh, the usefulness of it and the benefit to our communities. Now, having said all those, kind of going back in time, there was never a joint powers agreement or a written agreement, other than a mutual aid pact between all those cities on the operation of the SWAT team. So, on July twenty-sixth of eighteen, Tracy Stille from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance came and just did a liability and loss control operation of our police department. In that process, he goes, do you have a SWAT team? And I said, yes, we do. And he says, we don't have any record of it through the League of Minnesota Cities, and he didn't have any record of it for South Lake and for Orno and for Minatrista, and so therefore, him and I spoke and talked about mutual aid agreements, we can do it the way we currently do, or a joint powers agreement. In my discussion and research with other agencies, the joint powers agreement model seemed to work better, and the main reason is because if there was, there's eighteen members on the team, um, not currently, but that's the, the large amount that we've had, we're down a little bit now, but if there was an incident where we went to, let's say, um, Orno, and five or six of those officers from five or six of those departments got into a shooting, each city, each officer represented by their city would have a different representative from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance. So there were, therefore, there'll be five different insurance agents from the League of Minnesota Cities representing five different cities. If you had a joint powers agreement, you would have one representing all officers. Um, and looking at this, there's other departments that have it, most notably, uh, the Tri-County SWAT team, which is even more unique than ours, it's two di, it's Scott County and Carver County, uh, Savage Police and Shakopee Police Department, so two different counties, different cities, it works for them, they have thirty-eight members. We expect that our cost for this insurance by going to a joint powers would be about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, we already have that in, within our budget, so this doesn't cost me over and above my operating costs to do that, so it's already built in, uh, the dues into there, so, um, I, I presented this to the, the board of directors, all the chiefs from each city that I mentioned earlier, they said, yeah, I think it's time that we actually write this down and get it in a JPA. Um, so I wrote the JPA, there's some minor corrections that, in the copy that you have that I'm aware of. John and I, uh, have been working side-by-side on making some changes and, and, uh, I presented this to the police commission, uh, they, they agreed that a joint powers would be the right way to go with that, but wanted to present each city that they were aware of it, uh, on that aspect. So, I would ask that we move for a joint powers police department, or SWAT team, Lake Minnetonka SWAT team, uh, let John and I make a few minor changes yet in that, and that we move forward with that so that the other cities can, can sign and join as well. But I'd be happy answering questions, hopefully that gives you a little bit of history and how we ended up where we are now.
Thank you for being willing to come and explain each council, because I know you've already done this with the police commission, so if anyone else has any questions, otherwise, the commission's already in favor?
Is there, uh, you've been working as a group without a JPA for a number of times, is there anything in this JPA that either increases or decreases your powers or authority, or is it just basically a legal document?
It's basically just the legal document, the sharing of equipment, personal costs, they're all the same as what we've been doing, so.
How to disband, how to.
Yeah, all that stuff, that, yeah.
Um, in, and maybe this is for John, um, but the D, the, you, you're given pretty broad authority to accept anything of value, is, does, is that going to be in conflict with the gift ban, John? I mean, you go through, you know, they can take in, or they can, they can get assistance, uh, cash grants, loans, money, whatever, from the US government, state of Minnesota, or any person, association or agency for any purpose. And so that could be an individual, it could be, and, you know, that could be, I don't know, vests, guns, whatever, is, is there going to be a conflict here because it could be construed as a gift, especially since you're required to utilize your own guns and things of that nature, and you're responsible for those, I just, it's broad, I just, is, are we going to run it or not, Professor John?
I don't, I don't see that we would, Councilmember Fay, because it'll be checked by gift law along the way, um, if it, uh, we, one thing we could do is to clarify that, uh, so it captured, we could add, you know, s, subject to law or something, or some clause like that, just to, to address that issue, um, yeah, I, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay. Oh, I do have one question, will the, you're going to have, this dictates that you have quarterly meetings.
Correct.
Will the four members of the police commission be invited to your quarterly meetings or expected to attend?
No, no, it would be meetings between the chief law enforcement officers or your chiefs from each police department that are members, that's the governing board.
Which isn't changing, correct?
Correct, that's what it was before.
I mean, that's how they've been operating, so that, that's no change.
All right.
Any other questions from chief or staff? Okay, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Lake Minnetonka SWAT Joint Powers Agreement.
Still moved?
Moved by Councilmember Broda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Okay, motion carries. Next item of business is the developers' agreement, approval between Haven Homes Incorporated and the City of Maple Plain.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council, uh, what you have before you is a developers' agreement, uh, that really outlines, uh, as Haven Homes is moving forward on their project, uh, kind of the requirements and, and the expectations are laid out in a developers' agreement while the project is being constructed and while they're going through that phase. So, last month, uh, city council met and we, uh, we approved a purchase agreement for the park and ride facility, um, to be sold, uh, essentially a closing to, uh, to Elam and Haven Homes. And what we have here now is, okay, now when construction begins, here are the, uh, here's what Haven Homes, uh, the city, these are our expectations and what we, we need you guys to be able to meet while you guys are under construction moving forward. Um, so as you look through this, uh, a lot of the things that are touched on, for instance, are right-of-way exchanges, so there's a new street going into place, uh, that does have a park and ride. Things that are labeled out in this agreement say that you will turn over the right-of-way over to the city once that's completed, you must complete the city street to our city standards, there's erosion control measures in terms of, um, you know, sweeping, taking care of any erosion that's coming up from the project, having proper, uh, erosion control measures in place during construction to control the amount of, um, uh, material being released, uh, into, you know, could be creeks or watersheds, all those different things. Uh, there's financial guarantees that lay out the fee schedule that city council, I know, reviewed, uh, at our previous workshop, lays out the financial commitments that, um, Haven Homes would have to the city in moving forward with this process, including park dedication fees, sewer access charges, water access charges. Um, uh, the one thing in here that I am going to leave, uh, asks for the city council to, uh, allow John and I to finish on this agreement, is, um, we're working with the developer, and here we really touch on a letter of credit for the, um, right, like the right-of-way components, all, all the public infrastructure. Uh, that would include the utilities that are being pulled off of Howard Avenue to the back of their building, and then also the street components with the park and ride. Uh, working with the developer, the developer would like to move forward with a cash escrow instead of a letter of credit, and that is referenced here in this agreement, which is, hey, that's, that's better for us, instead of having the bank provide a letter saying, yeah, they have the funds available on account, the, the developer would actually, uh, prefer at this time to hand the city those dollars to hang on and release as they finish each section, much like a letter of credit, except for we have the funds in our possession. Um, so that's, that's really the only thing in here that stands out that I, I do need a little leeway on, um, in terms of working that out with John, and, um, outside of that, I, I mean, this agreement, uh, talks about maintenance of public property, uh, um, you know, maintenance of, you know, sidewalks that are put in place, the, uh, there's a trail that's going to be created, uh, along Baker Park Road that's touched down in here, um, insurance requirements, uh, during the construction phase, you know, that they, uh, um, you know, any, any liabilities that they have insurance to take care of those, uh, you know, they meet all watershed district maintenance, uh, requirements, um, you know, talks about snow removal, just about everything you can think about is touched on in this agreement. Um, a lot, one of the things that is mentioned in here that's a little different is we are re, we're not requiring, Hennepin County's requiring a traffic study along Baker Park Road for this project, so that's referenced in here that they need to complete that. Um, there's a final plot recording, which is a huge part of some of the, um, uh, some, this is a little bit goofy just because some of these, uh, items, um, aren't going to be turned back till they're completed, but the final plot has to be recorded as well. Um, so some of the legals that you see on like the first page, we don't have yet, uh, so some of it's a little goofy in that sense, but, um, yeah, I, it really touches on everything. I know that, uh, Elam has reviewed this document as well, and, uh, their only thing that they really wanted to bring up was, was moving really to a, a total cash escrow of everything, which is advantageous to the city, outside of that, um, that's what we're looking at right now. So, um, is there any questions that city council has pertaining to the developers' agreement?
Of course. Um, Bobby, on the, uh, fee schedule, um.
Yep.
Did, can, do we have a confirmation that Met Council will accept our SAC credits?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Done deal?
Yeah.
They don't have a choice.
Well, I see, because when we last saw this.
It's one of the few times I can actually say that about them.
When we last saw that, that didn't show a zero, and it shows a zero now.
It does, because, yeah.
I just want to make sure that, that Hennepin Co, or Met Council's aware that they're, they're, they're coming. And then you mentioned, um, that they're going to go to a total, uh, cash escrow instead of a letter of credit, but that's not for the fee schedule, that's for like the road construction and, that's for the, that's for the improvements, and you're working with John on what that dollar amount will be, is that what you're?
Well, I'm working with their, um, so we're, we're working with, uh, their contractor that they have to get those numbers, and then I have Dan review them to make sure they're accurate.
Okay.
And then we accept that when that's in there.
Got it.
So, um, yeah, those, those numbers are validated, uh, with, uh, smarter people like Dan than me, so that's why we have a good city engineer.
We're not getting money for a poll or a. You just make sure that doesn't happen.
Four, four polls.
Expensive poll. Good questions, any other?
Uh, yeah, Madam Mayor and members of council, just very briefly, I, I would agree with Bobby, um, on pretty much everything you said, with one exception, I, I guess there'd be a couple more things that I, I perceive might, minor changes, so again, this would be another one that would be asking me to approve, subject to some final revisions by myself and Bobby as we kind of go through the process, and, actually, Councilmember Fay, I, I think it's a good point that you make as far as the SAC credits, probably it's something she includes, and to capture that we, that we did contribute that, even if it's not, you know, it's one in, one the other, but, um, that is, it's not a contribution from developer, but I think it's probably worth noting here, um, as a part of the project. And, um, it, the, you, you'll notice the few blanks along the way, information that the developer will have that will add to that, and the exhibits themselves, um, but by and large, as, as Bobby mentioned, um, they've been pretty receptive to this, I think we're pretty much on the same page in this meeting, anyway.
Thank you for clarifying those things. Any other questions for any of our staff? All right, so with that then, I am looking, um, for a motion to approve the developers' agreement, approval between Haven Homes Incorporated and the City of Maple Plain, subject to the revisions needed by our staff.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Broda. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post same sign? Next item of business, I'm going to turn over to Councilmember Broda.
All right, well, if you guys know me, which you all do know by now, uh, this is an incredibly difficult thing for me to do, and, um, you know, a lot has changed in the last couple of years. Um, August two thousand and sixteen, I had a discussion with Bobby, in which he encouraged me to file for city council, and, uh, I did. Uh, and after a, a long and rigorous election season, uh, John and I were elected to city council, uh, a couple of months later, and, uh, after being appointed in office in, in early two thousand and seventeen, uh, life just kept changing, and a few months after being sworn in here, I was appointed to an even higher office of dad, and, um, things changed fast, and now I'm a dad of a one-year-old. In my vocational life, things have been changing, and, uh, there's a pending change that's going to just take a lot more of my energy and time and, and attention, and it's just getting increasingly difficult to balance all of those priorities and do everything well. And so, being at the point of my, my priorities competing against one another and knowing how important each of them are, um, I think I owe it to my family, I owe it to my job, and I owe it to this position that all of them be done well, and so I think, at this point, I'm going to ask that you accept my resignation, uh, and I have full faith that another person is going to step into this role and do it well, and, uh, give it the time and the priority that's needed for the city and for the citizens. So, I want to thank all of you, I want to thank the city for trusting me in this over the last two-plus years, I want to thank the staff and the consultants and the various commissions that I've been on, uh, learned so much and appreciate all of you and all the work you do, and, uh, for the city council, for the friendships we've had and the things we've worked on together, and even when we disagree, the respect you've had for me and for each other, uh, the patience you've had with me, uh, really thank you so much for all that, and there's great things ahead for the city with everything, uh, everything coming up, and I know that once we're back at full council and, and, uh, just a few weeks here after the special appointments and after the election, um, great things are going to continue, so, thank you for the, the time and, um, and appreciate all of your support, so.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, thank you, um, it has been an honor working with you, and I've always appreciated your perspective and your passion for the community and, um, just doing your job a hundred and ten percent, and I admire you for making this decision, I know it has not been easy, and, um, appreciate you for giving a hundred and ten percent until you were done and being open about the whole process and where you're at, and I wish you nothing but continued success and the best, and thankful you're still going to be a part of the community and involved in things, and we'll see you at movies and other things, right?
Oh, of course, yeah.
We're still hanging out with us.
I'm still a partner with you guys.
All right.
Someone has to have a sound.
Without the title, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm glad you acknowledged the election from a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because, uh, uh, I think you'd agree that when we both elected to run, um, half Because I think you'd agree that when we both elected to run, half of it was the fact that no one was clamoring to join the City Council. But the other 50% is your desire to be involved, do the right thing, and, and you really have. Public office, public service is not in anyone's, everyone's DNA, and you've made a difference in this community. We make decisions every month that affect residents and taxpayers and business owners, and you've made those with passion, a heart, and a brain. And I just want to say, I, I appreciate that. I, going forward, I wish you all the best, up luck, both professionally and personally, and I've enjoyed our time together. Thank you. You too.
I would definitely echo everything that these two have said in more, and I think you hit it on the head with the, the respect piece in that, you know, when we agreed, when we didn't, there was always respect here, and I always appreciated that, and learned a lot from everyone here, and so I'm sad to see you go, but I note that you'll have a lot of fun with that little baby boy, so.
With that, then, we do need to accept Councilmember Broda's letter of resignation, so I'm looking for a motion to do so.
Can he make a...
Can I?
Can he?
I don't know, that's appropriate.
That might be a conflict.
I'll maybe vote aye on it.
All right, I will make a motion that we accept Councilmember Broda's letter of resignation.
I think I'm hiring that. I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Fay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and commitment.
Thank you all.
Next item of business is ordinance and summary ordinance 3032019, special elections.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is an ordinance that is essentially just, I'm describing that we're going to do a special election for both the two vacancies that we have on the City Council. This election would take place in August, and that we are having, going to go out for temporary appointments until then. So that just lays it all out in official way.
Nicole, would you mind going through in detail the timeline in case people are watching this online or later?
Yep, absolutely.
You did a great job in the letter, and maybe just hitting those highlights of the deadline dates, I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. So, starting tomorrow, we are going to be accepting applications for the temporary appointment, two temporary appointments to City Council. City Council is planning on accepting those applications until April 4th, and doing interviews on Monday, April 8th, and making those appointments to City Council on that Thursday, April 11th. The two people that are appointed will serve until the, until after the election results are certified. We anticipate that will be shortly after the election, in mid-August. And if anyone is interested in running for the City Council positions, filing for that will take place at the beginning to mid-June. One position will be until the end of 2020, the other position will be until the end of 2022, and people can only run for one position or the other. So, those are some things to keep in mind.
And I think too, just one thing we do want to clarify, because I know I've been asked by some neighbors, is why are we spending the money on a special election?
Sure.
And it was not an option.
Correct, yep.
So we're already doing an election, so that's why we are out, going to add Council, Dominic Broda's seat to the ballot as well, so it'll be two spots on the ballot.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, with the Councilmember Tempe resigning in his first, his first year of his four-year term, by state law, we're mandated to have a special election. So that's not a, there's no option provided to the City Council law. State statute dictates we do have that special election. With, with Councilmember Broda stepping down, resigning, he is in the last two years of his four-year term, so the option is available for City Council to appoint someone to that role, but with the understanding that the special election is already happening, City Council made a determination to have both spots available for the special election and go that approach, so.
That's, that's the way to do it.
And one other question too, just since we're putting all the information out there, which is important to be transparent, is people had also asked, "Why are we waiting until August to do this?"
That's also state statute. We have to, there's actually so many days during the year that you can do an election, and then you have to have so much time. So, it's actually February, April, May, August, and November, so there's days those months, and that's the only time we can do it. We don't have enough, too short of a time to do it for April or May, so we're doing it in August.
Thank you. Any other questions or things we want to know?
I just, Bobby, I just, and Nicole, I just want to go on record by saying that even though the ordinance shows April 22nd or sooner for the appointment, and I understand why, because that's our next scheduled business meeting, but remember, I am gone the 14th through the 22nd.
Right.
And if we wait till the 22nd, you will not have a quorum.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm aware, I'm aware. I think that's put in there, just...
I understand why. It's just to, if we're interviewing on the 8th, then...
We're having the special meeting on the 11th, so we should be...
Correct. Right now, we're shooting for, as the schedule has pointed out, we're looking to interview applicants on April 8th, and then having and holding a special meeting on Thursday, April 11th, as we're in those...
And we want to keep that moving, because ideally, we do not want to be functioning as a body of three, so, I mean, really, we're moving the process along as quickly as possible, while making sure to give enough time.
And Councilmember Fay, I, I can tell you the, that's my doing. Nicole had the, the date that you originally proposed, I, I propose just giving, giving yourself a little bit of a buffer in there, just, yeah.
All right. Any other questions or communication?
Okay, with that, I am looking for a motion to approve ordinance and summary ordinance 3032019 for special elections.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion?
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The ayes have it three to zero.
So ordinance and resolutions go by roll?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I think I surprised you guys there, but, yeah, no.
All right, thank you. Next item of business is council reports and other business, and let's start with Councilmember Cahill.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting, where we discussed the building, residential building proposal we saw tonight. We also had a Personnel Committee where we discussed some changes to the handbook, and then also attended the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce mixer, despite being an early morning for some of us. But it was great to see a great, huge turnout, lots of businesses, not only for Maple Plain, but surrounding areas to network and make great connections.
I continue to attend my regular Rotary meetings, as well as our regular Party in the Park meetings, which is planned for June 1st this year. Just want to let you know that donations and commitments to donate are on par with 2018, so that's a good thing. I attended my first Park Commission meeting as council liaison. I too had coffee with the mayor and Caitlin at the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce, and I had a Pioneer Sierra Creek Watershed Management meeting on last Thursday. There are some changes on tap for 2020, which I will ask to bring council up to speed at the next workshop.
Thank you. It has been a busy month for everyone. I, as well as at the Personnel Committee meeting, Rotary, and the chamber, want to encourage everyone on April 9th, our next chamber meeting, we will be doing a State of the City, that will be at noon here, so all are welcome, and we look forward to sharing about good things going on in the city. Also, began the month with the Highway 12 Safety Coalition meeting, this was a particularly hard meeting. They're never easy or fun, but five days prior, Marlena was tragically killed on Highway 12. So this group is continuing to advocate, continuing to work, and is a great example of what together we can get done, law enforcement, elected officials, city administrators, and residents. So, nobody has done, everyone's goal is to continue to work towards zero death, and everyone is committed to doing better. So, we are still here and working for everyone driving on Highway 12. So please do your part with the E and be safe. Put down your phones, and don't drink and drive, and all those other things we do that distract us. Was able to attend the Regional Councilor Mayor's meeting, had a great discussion with infrastructure investment on the post-Harsted decision, so learned a lot there. Was able to attend the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities meeting, our Hennepin County assessor came out, that was great, he went over the assessment report for 2019 to prepare us for what things will be happening in our city, and our Truth and Taxation meeting. Everyone's been busy, attending EDA, special workshops where we talked about the plans for the vacant seats and what those look like. So it's been a good meeting. And then also, as the Maple Plain City Council, we did hold two closed session meetings on March 11th and March 20th to discuss personnel issue where City Council provided direction to city staff. So it has been a busy month for everyone, so. With that, any other business? Any visitors to be heard? Okay. Seeing none, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting's adjourned at 8:36.